Greetings. And welcome to the January 13, 2020 meeting of the Seattle City Council. It is 2:03 PM. I'm Lisa Herbold, President Pro Tem of the City Council. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Juarez.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sawat.
Here.
Strauss.
Present.
Council President Pro Tem Herbold.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Presentations, there are no presentations. We'll move on to approval of minutes. There are no minutes for presentation today. And moving on to adoption of the referral calendar. If I move to adopt the introduction and referral calendar. I'm looking your way.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem Herbold. I move to amend the proposed introduction and referral calendar by introducing Resolution 31926 entitled, quote, "A resolution of reaffirming Seattle as a welcoming city expressing the Seattle City Council's solidarity with Seattle's South Asian community regardless of religion and caste and opposing India's National Register of Citizens and Citizenship Amendment Act by referring it to the City Council for consideration on January 21, 2020."
Thank you. For the record, I want to recognize that we did receive a second for the motion to amend the introduction and referral calendar. Are there any comments?
If I might just describe what it is. This is a resolution in opposition to the horrendous Citizenship Amendment Act and the National Register of Citizens in India. These are policies of the far-right Modi government in India and are expected to, if they're carried out through their full logic, strip 200 million Muslim people of their Indian citizenship in addition to others in the country. India's Prime Minister Modi has a long track record of promoting violence and discrimination towards Muslim people and people of the lower castes. His policies use xenophobia to drive right-wing demagoguery, much like Donald Trump does, and they have even held a joint rally in Texas, Trump and Modi have. Seattle's South Asian community has requested that the city speak out on this issue because it is the duty of ordinary people to oppose the dangerous right rise of the far-right everywhere in the world and believes that the rapidly expanding authoritarianism of the Modi government in nuclear-armed India is of concern not only to the millions of Muslims, oppressed castes, women, LGBTQ and LGBT people in India who are under threat, but also to Seattle's South Asian immigrant community and all those opposed to Trump and the right wing in the United States. We're introducing this resolution today. I've emailed a copy of that to all your offices so that it is available online, also for the public to see, and we will move it for a vote at next week's council meeting, which is on Tuesday, January 21, instead of the usual Monday because of the MLK holiday on Monday.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the amendment to the introduction and referral calendar vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries and the amendment is adopted. Are there any other further comments? Fantastic. Those in favor of adopting the introduction and referral calendar as amended, vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries and the introduction of the introduction referral calendar is adopted as amended. There is no objection. The agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. And at this time, we will take public comment on items that appear on today's agenda and the introduction referral calendar. I have a number of speakers signed up. Public comment will be accepted for 20 minutes. Speakers are limited to two minutes of public comment. If a speaker's comment exceeds two minutes, the Clerk will indicate so and turn off the microphone. Speakers are asked to begin their comments by first identifying themselves and the agenda item that they wish to address. All right, great. I'm going to call speakers up to the microphones two at a time. There are multiple mics. If you could line up at each, that'd be great. We first have Robert Cannamare, followed by Mark Taylor Canfield.
My name is Robert Cannamare. I want to speak about the clean campaign. I'm going to give you a reason why we need clean campaigns. Years ago, I ran for office, and I was running against corporate money. I came in a very poor second. Very poor second, because I did not have the money to get my word out to the constituents. Think of what I could have done for our schools.
Beautiful, thank you.
For our road projects. Helping the homeless if I had been able to have an equal and fair campaign. I didn't make it, but there are others who need the same chance. Corporate money, dark money, has to go. Thank you.
Mark Taylor Canfield will be followed by Rebecca Laszlo.
I'm here to speak in favor of a resolution against war with Iran. War of any kind, basically. I mean, I think after Vietnam, Afghanistan, Iraq, I mean, have we not learned our lessons? We have schools that are falling apart. People are suffering without health care. Our democracy is being challenged on all sides, and we're spending trillions of dollars on wars in other countries. So this is what I have to say. Everybody's talking about Trumpism, militarism, thisism, thatism. All we are saying is give peace a chance. All we are saying is give peace a chance. Everybody's talking about economics, regonomics, poverty, security, policy, policy. All we are saying is give peace a chance. All we are saying is give peace a chance. Everybody's talking about homelessness in Seattle. When's it gonna end? When are the wars gonna end? When are people gonna be taken care of before we spend more money on weapons? All we are saying is give peace a chance. All we are saying is finally give peace a chance.
Following Rebecca Laszlo is Dan, I believe it's Gilman.
Thank you. My name is Rebecca Laszlo. I'm in the 7th District, directly represented by Councilors Lewis, welcome to us, and Mosqueta and Gonzalez. I'm here to talk on clean campaigns and the Iran issue. I am in strong support of the clean campaign ideas. I think the way that you're discussing tabulating foreign ownership, I can't judge well, but it seems like it is very quantifiable, and so I support that. I do believe that PAC money should also be capped, and I think that's something still in committee, so I favor the trend in that direction. And the clear reporting of PAC spending is also very positive, in my opinion. So I'm strongly in favor of all these two bills today and the third one that may emerge from the committee in the near future. The second issue is the treatment of the apparent Iranian-Americans, Iranian citizens and people of heritage, as well as the Trump administration work on war. I oppose all of that. My personal friend happened to be crossing back into the U.S. at Blaine the very day that those American citizens were being detained. It is not a false fact. It is happening, and I applaud your resolution on today's agenda. I support it as well. And then lastly, I want to welcome the new councilors who are here, congratulate the returning ones who passed through the difficult election process, and thanks also to the returning councilors who serve us so well. Thank you for being leaders in our community.
Following Dan Gilman is Cynthia Wetzel.
Good afternoon. My name is Dan Gilman. I live in Wallingford. I am past president of the Veterans for Peace Seattle Chapter, and I'm on the organizing committee of the Seattle Anti-War Coalition. And I'm here to urge you to support Resolution 31925 today. After the assassination of Soleimani on January 3, within 24 hours, on Saturday, January 4, 15,000 to 20,000 Americans rallied, marched, and protested in 90 cities across the United States against the war on Iran. Here in Seattle, over 500 Seattleites rallied in Steinberg Park to say no to war on Iran. Last Thursday, the House of Representatives passed a bill that would force Trump to get authorization from Congress to make war on Iran. All the Washington state representatives that represent all or parts of Seattle voted for this bill to stop Trump from unilaterally starting a war with Iran. A Gallup poll found that 78% of U.S. adults oppose the war in Iran. The American people oppose this war not just because it would be illegal, unjustified, and unnecessary, but would likely end up killing hundreds of thousands of people, perhaps millions, mostly Iranian citizens. And it would be a colossal waste of money in another endless war. So for the sake of our nation, our community, let's heed what the people say and heed the voice of the American people in the Seattle community.
Please approve 31925 resolution. Following Cynthia Wetzel, we'll have David Haynes.
Yes, I'd like to speak in support of any actions by the City Council, including these resolutions that oppose U.S. wars on people of the Middle East, xenophobic actions against immigrants, American-born Iranians, the people of India where Muslims are under the threat of genocide right now. And we need to do what people in India are doing and what happened in Puerto Rico, Hong Kong, where people have actually gotten out of their comfort zones, courageously gotten the streets in a very determined way. We live in a country where we have a fascist regime in power. I'm here as a volunteer from RefuseFascism.org and the Out Now, Trump Pence, Out Now movement. People have to confront the fact that we have a fascist regime in power. They are trying to consolidate that. And what that means is they're following Hitler's playbook. They want to establish an open terrorist regime against the people, mostly against the world, but also against what's happening in this country: babies in cages, environmental destruction, xenophobic actions against immigrants. And it goes on and on and on. So we have to learn from this, and people have to get out of their comfort zone. They need to stay in the streets, not just once a month, not just every once in a while, but have a growing movement until we have millions of people that say, "We refuse to accept a fascist America and demand the ouster of this regime." It is great that impeachment is going on, but that is not going to solve it in and of itself. There has to be a mass movement from below. We need to join with other protests this month, the global protest against war on the 25th, and at the Women's March. We need to raise Trump Pence Out Now. We're not talking about waiting for the elections. We are talking about out now. Every day this regime exists, it is catastrophic humanity. We have a president that jokes about dropping nuclear weapons on people, and they have --
Good wrap-up, please.
-- this is the only country that's ever dropped nuclear weapons on the people of Japan. Civilian casualties. Thousands of people have been killed in the Middle East because of this country.
Thank you. I appreciate it. David Haynes will be followed by Javed Sikander.
Hi, David Haynes. I just wanted to address the agenda and the lack of need for an additional agenda. Congratulations to the new council. I hope you're successful in solving the societal problems, societal impulsive problems caused by previous council policies and the mayor who exempted drug pushers, who destroy lives daily, creating a bunch of junkie thieves stealing everything in sight. Yet I don't see anything on the council's new agenda to address anything relative to the ongoing problems. Only thing I see is council doing city council members a favor in upcoming election in two years by helping further sabotage our democracy by looking back at last election and prohibiting most money that donates in opposition to council Democrats guaranteeing a rigging of our democracy. Do you really think prohibiting job creators from donating $500 per employee is fixing our democracy? Where is the legislation to empower the people to have a say in special elections when city council members leave early to do bidding of companies to buy them off? The people should have the right to vote in special elections, not the city council. Now it's middle of winter amidst a storm, and yet city council is allowing the mayor to mislead the people of Seattle about her subhuman shelter that kicked people out at the coldest part of the morning with wet shoes, dry clothes, no food, no shower, no bus tickets, no resource whatsoever, and there's never been any accountability. Now, city council wants to get in the national news about international issues by sympathizing with an Iranian terrorist who killed and maimed a bunch of noble U.S. military soldiers. City council seems to love making a racist mountain out of a molehill regarding people who aren't even citizens crossing border, being questioned without torture or long-term detainment in jail. Yet city council wants to waste valuable time delaying any effort to solve the crisis caused by the city council and mayor's policies regarding the homeless who are subhuman mistreated by the shelters. Maybe you all should just allow the 12-hour notice for the businesses to clear the sidewalks that are less timed than the homeless, to hire some people to clear the sidewalks, you know, create a little crappy job.
Thank you. Following Javed Sikander is Prashant Nima.
Hello, everyone. My name is Javed Sikander. I'm a member of a group of folks who work for peace and democracy and secularism in India here in Seattle area. I live in Redmond. I've been here for 20-plus years. So I'm here to support the resolution that our council member Shama Savant just introduced, which is reaffirming Seattle as a welcoming city and expressing the Seattle City Council's solidarity with Seattle's South Asian community regardless of religion and caste and opposing India's National Register of Citizens and Citizenship Amendment Act. So as a resident of Seattle, a city that is seen around the world as a place for all communities, people of all religion and values living peacefully and harmony, I strongly support this resolution. And to voice our deep concerns on the rising hate and fascism in India, which is reflected in this Citizenship Registry Act, which essentially is designed to strip the citizenship of 250 million people. If you understand the size of that, that would be the fifth-largest country if they were to live in a separate country by itself. So that's the number of people who are at risk of losing their rights to vote, for example, or rights to make their say, have their say in the democratic process of India. And also, in a country where maintaining birth records is just impossible, so to prove your citizenship, you have to get your father's birth certificate, you know, from 70 years back. More than half the people don't have any physical, you know, records of citizenship in India, so it's essentially a law that will marginalize a large number of people. I'm here to strongly support the resolution that is being proposed. Thank you very much.
Following Prashant Nima is Hassan Khan.
Thank you, council member, for allowing me to speak here. My name is Prashant. I have been in Seattle area since 2001. I'm here to support the resolution that council member Shama Savant has introduced. My biggest issue with the National Registry of Citizens that is being introduced by India is that it assumes that everyone is guilty by default unless until they prove it otherwise. And then the law will proceed to treat them worse than convicted criminals. They'll be sent to detention centers where there is no human right practices that are yet defined, and it will include children, women, and seniors. For a normal person, when I tell them this, they are horrified, and they equate it with Germany's Nuremberg Law, because, as Javed explained, that it also curtails people's right to vote, because the government officials can arbitrarily define if you are a citizen or not. This actually hurts the marginalized communities who have no access to legal documents disproportionately, also LGBTQ and women who have been not given family property rights, and also they don't have access to the same document. So it's going to impact millions of lives on our watch. So I propose that we should adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Hassan Khan, we have Ibrahim Mogul.
Hello, my name is Hassan Khan. I'm Washingtonian-American Muslim. I'm here to thank Congresswoman Councilmember Shama Savant for her support in our protest against this Dakonian law which will make 200 million Muslims of India as homeless, stateless. And this fascist party has a hidden agenda, and I'm a victim of mob violence by this fascist party in a train in India. So I really, I'm here to thank you, and I really appreciate your support. I look forward for your help. Thank you.
Following Ibrahim Mogul, we have Raghav Kashuk.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ibrahim Mogul. I'm here in the U.S. since last 17 years. So first of all, thank you, Councilmember Shama Savant, for presenting this resolution. So just to start with, you know, Seattle is one of the best cities I have, you know, seen so far in my -- Sorry. Basically, it is a symbol of democracy. It welcomes everybody. It is most friendly city. And the reason I'm speaking here today is my family, my parents, my siblings are back in India. And my father was a teacher since like 1960s, and my entire family is teaching from last several decades, and now they are in a fear of going to detention center. So we need to make voice against these kind of laws passed by the Indian fascist government, especially this is the first country in the world which will not agree on your citizenship because of your passport. They are doing it on the basis of religion. So it is the worst kind of human crisis we have having in India, and it is violating all the human rights which are defined by the United Nations. So my request to all council members is to approve this resolution as we proceed, and thank you for that.
Yes.
My name is Raghav. I'm here in support of the resolution that was just proposed, as well as to oppose the war against Iran. So, you know, I just wanted to say a few things. I think one thing is that the Indian constitution is one of the biggest progressive victories of the 20th century, I believe. And what these laws do by the Indian government is they attack it, right? They try to undermine some of the most progressive principles of the constitution. And that's not just my opinion. There's a mass movement in India which feels the same way, and it's one of the biggest spontaneous movements, at least in the last few decades, at least since the emergency in India, if not more than that. And they all are out in the streets protesting these laws for the same reason, right? They want to defend the Indian constitution, basically. The next thing is that I think we need all the help that we can. Since the government is not showing any signs of backing down, we need all the help that we can from the international community to show solidarity with those protests, which is why I think you should all vote for this resolution. And the connection with the war on Iran, I see all these movements as related, right? There's one of the biggest motivations behind the Indian laws is Islamophobia, and that's the same kind of racist and Islamophobic mentality is what is behind the war against Iran. And of course, there's a bigger issues of capitalism and imperialism which are intimately connected. The right-wing regime in India has deep echoes of the right-wing regime here, and I think we see, at least I see these battles as one and the same. So I would urge you to oppose war against Iran also. Thank you.
At that, five more people signed up to speak. If there's no objection, the public comment period will be extended an additional 10 minutes to 2:37 PM. Hearing no objections, the public comment period is extended to 2:38 PM. Next, we will have McKenna Lux, followed by Cindy Black.
Hello, my name is McKenna Lux. I'm the Policy Manager at CARE Washington. I'm also a Seattle resident from District 3. On behalf of CARE Washington, I am here to voice support for Resolution 31925, expressing opposition to escalation toward war with Iran. Councilmembers Sawat, thank you so much for sponsoring this resolution, and to the full council, we appreciate your consideration and hope to also see your support. Passing this resolution will show that the city of Seattle stands in solidarity with Seattle's Iranian-American community, is outraged by the targeting and detention of Iranian-Americans at points of entry, and is committed to ending government discrimination based on country of origin. CARE Washington supports this resolution, and while we hope to never experience such an incident again, as we saw in Blaine, we hope this resolution serves to show that the city of Seattle does not tolerate the discrimination that we saw at the border and is dedicated toward upholding Seattle's promise as a welcoming city. Thank you.
Cindy Black will be followed by Ken Damond.
Good afternoon. My name is Cindy Black. I'm the Executive Director of Fixed Democracy First. We're a pro-democracy, nonpartisan organization here in Washington State, and we're here to speak in support of the Clean Campaigns Act. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Gonzalez for championing this important legislation. The reason why we are advocating for this is that Fixed Democracy First used to be Washington Public Campaigns. We worked to overturn the law to allow for public funding to happen in Washington State again, making the way for the Democracy Vouchers. The vouchers are a great program. We know it's working. We advocate for those, and we'd like to see public funding expanded in the state. But at this point, we have to address independent expenditures, foreign money in elections, and increase transparency. And the three components of the bill, we support all of them. Today, you'll be voting on two of those, the foreign influence piece as well as the transparency piece, increasing that. We have been working with constitutional law experts around the country. You'll see expert testimony and letters of support that have been submitted from Harvard Law professors, Lawrence Tribe, John Coats. We also have support from Ellen Weintraub, the Federal Elections Commission's Chair. So we have a lot of support around this. We think this is a solid bill. We think it can stand up to legal challenge, if it is legally challenged, and we hope that looking at foreign money in elections is a big issue, and this would close a loophole. So we really hope that you will put forward this today in strengthening closure or limiting, I'm sorry, disclosure in our elections, as well as preventing foreign corporations from getting involved in our elections. So please vote yes on those two pieces. Thank you very much.
Ken Damond will be followed by Linda Brewster.
My name is Ken Damond. I'm with Fixed Democracy First also, and we are all in support of the aspects of the Clean Elections Bill. I'm here to speak particularly to the limitations on contributions to third-party PACs. These are called super PACs for a reason, and that is because they are able to accept donations of a size that would be considered corrupting if they were given directly to a candidate's campaign. Yet they are used for the same purpose, and nothing in the law precludes the contributor from talking to the candidate and making it clear that that support has been delivered. I want to point out that the Supreme Court did not create super PACs. That was done by a lower court. It could be overturned without a constitutional convention, and there are some very smart lawyers, as mentioned by Cindy, who think that a successful case could be made for overturning that decision. We owe it to the country to be the spark plug that starts that and take advantage of the good situation we have with pro bono legal support to take this all the way to the Supreme Court and fix this part of our system of elections. Thank you very much.
Following Linda Brewster, we have Brittany Bush-Bolay.
Hello, I'm Linda Brewster. I came from Port Townsend this morning. I'm not a Seattle resident, but I'm here in support of the Seattle City Council's passing of these two pieces of the Clean Campaigns Act. I've been an advocate for democracy reform, really part of a democracy rebellion movement that Fixed Democracy that Fixed Democracy First and Waamend before that and Public Campaigns has been a part of. And I do believe that systemic, the systemic problems in our society that are related to corporate power and that are related to its interference in our governance and in our elections is absolutely what we have to defeat. And we have to give people and our voters the ability to even believe, to have some faith in our elections, to have some faith in the governmental policies that arise from those elections. One person, one vote.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Brittany Bush-Bolay.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you. My name is Brittany Bush-Bolay. I'm a resident of District 7, and I am here to speak briefly in support of the entire suite of the Clean Campaigns reforms. At a time when our trust in our institutions is being eroded and when ordinary Americans feel their voices are being drowned out by the incomprehensibly wealthy and powerful, anything that we can do to protect the integrity of our electoral process is essential. I commend the Council for bringing these motions forward, and I look forward to watching them pass. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all. That concludes the public comment period, and we'll move on to the payment of bills. Please read the title.
Council Bill 119734, Property Money Payback Certain Claims for the Week of December 30, 2018 through January 3, 2020, and ordering the payment thereof.
I move to pass Council Bill 119734. Second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that the bill pass. Are there any comments? Seeing none, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Aye.
Strauss?
Aye.
President Pro Tim Herbl?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed. The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. We'll now move on to the committee reports. We have a report from the Select Committee on Campaign Finance Reform. Can you please read the report?
The Report of the Select Committee on Campaign Finance Reform. Agenda Item 1, Council Bill 119731, relating to elections, prohibiting foreign influence corporations from making independent expenditures or contributing to campaigns and independent expenditure committees, amending Section 2.04.010.260.270.360 and 370 Seattle Municipal Code, and adding a new section 2.04.400 to the Seattle Municipal Code. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Fantastic. Thank you. Just moving right into the amendments, I want to start off, and we can speak to the merits of the bill after passage of the amendments. I move Amendment 1 to amend Council Bill 119731, Section 2, as presented on Amendment 1 of the agenda. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. This amendment adds the definition of independent expenditure committee to the definitions section. This necessary definition was previously missing. So, any comments? All right. Pass it. Those in favor of voting in support of the amendment, vote aye.
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 None opposed, none abstaining. Amendment 2 is I move to amend Council Bill 119731, Section 7, as presented on Amendment 2 of the agenda. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's okay. This amendment changes the title of Section 7 from "Limits on Expenditures" to "Independent Expenditure Committees" to simply "Independent Expenditures." What seemed to be a technical amendment is actually a substantive amendment because it would ensure that foreign influence corporations would not be able to simply make political expenditures themselves. The bill as drafted focuses on limitations to foreign influence corporations to expenditure, to independent expenditure committees. And so this is definitely another loophole that would be useful to close. Any comments? Seeing no comments, those in favor of Amendment 2, please vote aye.
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 None opposed, none abstaining. So to the bulk of the bill, I want to thank Councilmember Gonzalez for her leadership on this effort, as well as the various stakeholders who have been involved in the Clean Campaigns effort. We know that out of the 20 largest corporations to PAC in 2019, at least seven of those 20 could have met the definition of a foreign influence corporation. Federal law and judicial decisions interpreting that law make abundantly clear that foreigners are barred from spending money to influence US elections. This is true whether they attempt to influence US elections in their personal capacity or through a corporation. Foreign investors own increasing shares of US corporate stock, going from only 5% in 1982 to approximately 35% in 2017. Foreign interests can easily diverge from US interests. That is true nationally, and it can be certainly true locally in municipal government. The areas of tax, trade, investment, and labor law, there are often divergent interests. Corporate directors and managers view themselves as accountable to their stakeholders, including foreign stakeholders. And a quote from former CEO of US-based ExxonMobil Corp starkly stated, "I'm not a US company, and I don't make my decisions based on what's good for the US." Corporate governance experts and regulators agree alike that these thresholds, as proposed in this bill, capture the level of ownership necessary to influence corporate decisions. And even the conservative former chairman of the US House Committee on Financial Services and the Business Roundtable concur that 1% is a threshold at which a single shareholder is able to influence significant corporate decisions. One of the most important campaign finance limits that we have is that foreign nationals are absolutely barred from spending directly or indirectly in US elections at any political level, federal, state, or city. Thus, it defies logic to allow groups of foreign nationals or foreign nationals in combination with American citizens to fund political spending through corporations. One cannot have a right collectively that one does not have individually. That concludes my comments on the first of the two bills related to Clean Campaigns that we're going to hear today. And do I call for the vote? Are there any questions or comments? Okay. Okay. Roll call, right. Get my right. Please call the roll on the passage of the bill. Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Aye.
Strauss?
Aye.
Pro Tim Herbl?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed. The second bill that we have, I'm sorry. Absolutely, the bill passes and the chair will sign it. Thank you. The next bill is Council Bill 119732.
Agenda Item 2, Council Bill 119732, relating to political advertising and qualified public communications, expanding commercial advertisers' duty to maintain and provide records regarding political advertising and qualified public communications, amending Section 2.04.010 and 280 of the Seattle Municipal Code. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Great, thank you. This bill relates specifically to requirements for commercial advertisers and qualified public communications. The current Seattle Municipal Code requires that commercial advertisers that provide political advertising during election maintain the names, addresses, nature, and extent of the ad, as well as the manner of payment. This bill enhances those requirements and applies them to all qualified public communications and defines a qualified public communication as a paid advertisement that is intended to influence legislation or influence an elected official's position on the legislation. More generally speaking to the need for this legislation, we know that only 5% of the contributions to PACs made contributions over $5,000, though those contributions accounted for almost 85% of the total money PACs collected in 2019. And with that, if there are other thoughts on this bill, welcome hearing them now.
Just want to say special thanks to Council President Gonzalez, Veen Wynn, Breonna Thomas, for your work on this. We know that transparency and light, when shown on the legislative process and governance, is a good thing and brings the accountability to the people of our city and whom we serve. So, thank you all.
With that, in addition to, thanks to staff, both council staff as well as central staff, want to speak that there is a third bill in the suite of bills that we are going to continue discussions on in the council president's absence, and we'll be in touch with stakeholders on that third bill at a later date. No further comments? Please call the roll on the passage of the bill. Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Aye.
Strauss?
Aye.
President Pro Tim Herbl?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. We'll move on to adoption of other resolutions. Please read into the record, Item Number 3.
Adoption of Other Resolutions, Agenda Item 3, Resolution 31925, expressing the Seattle City Council's opposition to the Trump administration's escalation toward war with Iran and to attack on the democratic rights of people with Iranian heritage in Washington State, and requesting the Office of Intergovernmental Relations communicate these positions to the Washington State Congressional Delegation.
Councilmember Sawant.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tim Herbl. I would like to describe the motivation behind the resolution, but then also make a motion to hold it and explain why.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I wanted to thank all the activists who came here, Veterans for Peace, CARE Washington, Council on American Islamic Relations, really appreciate everybody who's here, who testified and who didn't testify, but who are here for supporting this resolution. This is the resolution in opposition both to Trump's escalation toward war with Iran and also in response to reports of Border Patrol agents targeting people of Iranian descent, including US citizens at the border crossing in Blaine, Washington, and also at the Seattle Tacoma International Airport. Trump's policies towards Iran, including airstrikes and the prominent drone assassination of Iranian Major General Qasem Soleimani, are risking war, and it is totally unacceptable. The US wars in Afghanistan and Iraq, we have seen, have not expanded the freedom, democracy, standards of living, or safety of ordinary people in the Middle East, have not increased the safety of people in the United States. Instead, they have caused massive loss of human life and ongoing suffering in Afghanistan and Iraq and for US soldiers. It is ordinary people, especially women, young people, and the marginalized who always pay the greatest price for imperialist war. In 2019, working people in Iran, Iraq, and Lebanon built inspiring mass movements against poverty, corruption, women's oppression, ethnic oppression, and authoritarian rule. However, what has happened now is that the threat of war with the US has cut across the momentum for these movements and helped strengthen, for now, the authoritarian Iranian regime. Instead of threats of war, we need a mass anti-war movement in the United States and globally in solidarity with the movements in the Middle East. In drafting this resolution, my office looked to see if there was any precedent set by the city council. In 2003, when Bush drove the US to war with George W. Bush, drove the US to war with Iraq using similarly sketchy intelligence reports claiming imminent threats with no details, it was shocking, actually, to find that the resolution that was passed in 2003 did not actually oppose the war in any way. And I think we need to set a different kind of precedent where actually for the Seattle City Council to take a stand against any kind of military aggression because I know, because we know it will be, it will not favor the safety and security of our country either. And so, we need to make sure that our movement is reflected, the movement that has changed the politics in the city and nationwide and internationally is reflected in the resolution that we pass. And I also want to be crystal clear that the way to honestly support the well-being of soldiers is don't start this war. And I think we have broad agreement that was reflected in the public comment that we just saw. We also want to make clear that we are opposed to the border patrol agents in Washington targeting people of Iranian descent. And we, and I want to speak more in detail about this, but I will reserve more comments for Tuesday, January 21. And just to, before I make the motion, I wanted to explain to members of the public, and especially who are here for this resolution, we have had requests for amendments to this resolution, which I'm happy to consider, but I would like for time to consider them so that we actually send the amendments to the activists who are involved, the organizations that have been involved in drafting my current resolution, so that you all have a chance to look at it and tell us what you think. And so I think in favor of that kind of public scrutiny, I will move to hold Resolution 31925 until January 21, 2020.
Second?
Thank you.
And I just want to also add that there are a number of organizations that, through the Office of Intergovernmental Relations that I worked with over the weekend, they too would like to have, be in active consultation in the development of the final resolution. And that includes the Iranian-American Community Alliance, PAVAND, which supports the University of Washington Persian and Iranian Studies Program, and then finally the Seattle Ishfahan Sister City Advocacy Organization, who's working, we work with them every year to hold an annual event, and they're working towards also becoming a sister city here with us. So they have expressed that more time would allow everyone more thoughtful consideration and consensus, and they're very honored to have their work and their community noticed and supported, and believe it's really critical for their community to see this sort of gesture of allyship at this particular time. So thank you for your willingness to work through some of the issues of a very, very diverse community here in Seattle.
Thank you. If I may just add, just to clarify to members of the public, my office was and has been in touch with the Office of Intergovernmental Relations and the Sister City Advocacy Organization as well, and we're happy to continue to be in touch with them, but we'll make sure that the proposed amendments are run through by the other organizations as well and come up with a recommended resolution that is, but a strong, but I would say a strong resolution that takes a position against war in Iran and also against the detaining of people of Iranian descent.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the resolution be held until January 21, 2020. Any further comments? Seeing none? Those in favor of holding resolution, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries. The resolution is held until January 21, 2020. Is there any other business to come before the council? Seeing none, we are adjourned. It is 2:51 PM. Thank you.